I hereby call the City of Buellton City Council Meeting for May 12 to order if I could get Councilmember Lewis to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
Ready it again.
The flag of the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just as one.
Hey Linda, roll call.
Hey Councilmember Andrusik.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Vice Mayor King.
Here.
And Mayor Ciara.
Here. Thank you. Um, let's see, reordering of the agenda?
We have no reordering.
Short meeting tonight. Public comments, I do have some public comments to read into the record for agenda item number eight, but I don't have anything for public comments. Linda, this is our public's opportunity for any item, anything they want to talk about for up to three minutes. Complaints, compliments.
I have no comments.
Nothing. Closing public comment. Moving on to the consent calendar. We have the minutes of April 28, 2022, regular city council meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Resolution number 22-17, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, adopting the fiscal year 2022, 23, list of projects funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Our financial report for the third quarter ending March 31, 2022. Resolution number 22-15, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, proclaiming the continuing need to meet by teleconference and approval of technology purchase agreement with G.G. Solutions to provide voice over internet phone V O I P service through Elevate. Any questions of staff?
Move approval.
Alrighty, Linda.
Okay, Vice Mayor King.
Bye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Hi.
And Mayor Ciara.
Hi. Thank you. Any presentations tonight?
No presentations.
Public hearings?
None of those either.
Councilmember comments slash items. I'll start with Councilmember Lewis. Any comments or items?
None.
None for you? Councilman Andrusik, any comments or items?
We haven't already.
Wonderful. And Vice Mayor King?
No ma'am.
Easy enough. I don't have anything either. Written communications?
None this evening.
Committee reports?
You want to start?
I, I usually end, but you, we'll, we'll start. Councilman Andrusik, are there any committee reports that you have?
C C W A.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So I don't have them. We haven't had a meeting yet.
Alrighty, thank you.
This time will be.
So at our next meeting, you'll enlighten us with water issues for Buellton.
Oh.
Thank you. Nothing for you? Vice Mayor King, enlighten us as to committee reports.
We, Holly, John and I went to J P I A out in Palm Desert and always J P I A gives us some wealth of knowledge, you know, they really give us some information to keep us from, you know, getting ourselves sued, so to speak. Shouldn't, shouldn't do. We had a big presentation about city managers. And they were both city managers that gave this forum. And it was just, it was a very interesting and informative information that we got. And I just loved going to J P I A.
It was a, Councilman Andrusik is our J P I A representative and you get to go every year, is it out to La Quinta for the elections? They vote their board members and you've been doing that for years.
I've been out of the loop and Dave's been picking it up very well, so I think he's, we won't miss a beat on that.
This was not an election, it was classroom. And yeah, it was, I, it's the first J P I A I've ever been to and it was very impressive.
They do a wonderful.
Impressive. I also went to, I had a S B CAG North County meeting, subregional meeting yesterday and the Robinson Bridge repair replacement going into Lompoc. The bridge has been settling over the years and there's cracks in the infrastructure and it was on Caltrans 30-year plan. We're now at 20 years, so we are work, we're, we're, they actually are starting to get ready to do the study on the bridge. It's moved up through their priority list and hopefully it'll be repaired before, we've already had some, some accidents on the bridge, but before we have anything more serious, we're hoping to get that. And then C H P, also Caltrans also said that they had their memorial, they do it every year for Caltrans employees lost on the job and the biggest cause is speeding through work zones. And Mayor Patino in Santa Maria suggested that they put cameras up for speeding vehicles and solving mayor or vice mayor said that they tried that in solving and got voted down by their residents because it was an invasion of privacy and Mayor Patino in Santa Maria said, well, they're putting theirs up in the next couple of months. And a little light clicked off and I wonder if it's something we should talk to Caltrans about for our 246. If there's cameras that are reading license plates of Lompoc residents who are speeding through our town, that perhaps that might be a deterrent. Anyway, just.
Madam Mayor, actually, and Greg probably knows this, there was a case, a very famous case where someone was filmed, had a red light traffic camera and took it to court. He was an attorney and they ruled that, no, you are in a public place and if you can see into the vehicle, then you are in a public place and therefore you do not have the right to privacy.
Anyway, just, I, just a little light clicked in my head and I thought, speeding in areas that you shouldn't be speeding. Going through the middle of our town. Okay, moving on to business items. We have our presentation by Central Coast Community Energy. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As you all are aware, in January of this year, Buellton residents and businesses had their electric, electricity generation switched from P G N E to being provided by now 3 C E. P G N E is still responsible for distribution of the power to the customers, but for the most part, unless customers have opted out, 3 C E, which is our, our local, oh, community choice aggregator for electric power has been handling that. They have been in the process over several months of onboarding everyone, taking care of answering questions, doing a lot of community outreach and a lot of customer service work. At this point this evening, though, they're here to do the first of what I'm sure will be many annual reports. And this is simply a presentation by 3 C E to the city council to let the city council and the public here know what 3 C E is up to and what we can look forward to in the coming year. This evening we have Jenna Espinosa who's with 3 C E and she will be providing a presentation. We should have it on the screen here, but if for some reason it's not working, you do have the PowerPoint presentation slides in your packet. So with this, I will turn this over to Jenna and let her give her presentation.
Welcome. Thank you so much. Can you see the proper screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you all so much for having me tonight and allowing me to present this update to you. Thank you for the introduction, Scott, and I'm happy to answer any questions either as we go along or at the end, whatever the culture of your council is, I'll follow you. So by way of overview, um, community choice aggregation began in 2002 with the passing of legislation that gives the power of communities to aggregate and they're purchasing power and procure energy on behalf of their community. And so we are one of 24 agencies that do community choice aggregation across the state of California. We, as, as an agency or as this collection of agencies, all 24 together, serve 11 million customers, which is about 50% of Californians. And the goal is for community choice aggregation to meet the vision of the community, so to meet more aggressive climate action goals, provide residents and businesses with a choice and to ensure local transparency, accountability, drive economic development and give the, the power of rate setting and policy setting to the community. The way that we work is that we purchase energy and work with Pacific Gas and Electric to deliver it to your homes and your businesses. So we continue to use the grid that is already established and the customer experience continues to be the same. P G N E continues to read the meter and actually do the billing. So we are one of 13 community choice agencies that collaborate with P G N E, but I believe we're the only C C A in the state that also collaborates with a second investor-owned utility. So we do serve the entire county of Santa Barbara with a few exceptions, I'll show you on the next map, but that, that means that we serve customers both across P G N E and in the southern parts of Santa Barbara County in the S C E area. Wow, I just skipped a lot of slides. There we go. Okay, um, so here are the 33 cities and county agencies that comprise our agency. We are organized through a joint powers agreement, so all these agencies sit on our board and we serve over 400,000 customers across this five-county service area. Geographically, we are the largest community choice aggregator in the state of California and we have a 34th agency joining us. I'm happy to report just a few months ago, the City of Atascadero elected to join our agency. So we'll be formalizing that in the coming months and then.
With G G solutions to provide voice over internet phone V O I P service through Elevate. Any questions of staff?
Move approval.
Alrighty, Linda.
Okay, Vice Mayor King.
Bye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andresic.
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra.
Hi. Thank you. Any presentations tonight?
No presentations this evening.
Public hearings?
None of those either.
Council member comments slash items. I'll start with Councilmember Lewis. Any comments or items? None for you. Councilman Andresic, any comments or items?
I think we haven't already.
Wonderful. And Vice Mayor King?
No ma'am.
Easy enough. I don't have anything either. Written communications?
None this evening.
Committee reports?
You want to start?
I I usually end, but you will start. Councilman Andresic, are there any committee reports that you have?
C C W A.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So I don't have one. We haven't had a meeting yet.
Alrighty, thank you.
Tomorrow this time.
So at our next meeting, you'll enlighten us with water issues for Buellton.
Oh.
Thank you. Nothing for you. Vice Mayor King, enlighten us as to committee reports.
We, Holly, John and I went to J P I A out in Palm Desert and always J P I A gives us some wealth of knowledge, you know, they really give us some information to keep us from, you know, getting ourselves sued, so to speak.
So.
Shouldn't shouldn't do. We had a big presentation about city managers. And they were both city managers that gave this forum. And it was just, it was a very interesting and informative information that we got. I just loved going to J P I A.
It was a, Councilman Andresic is our J P I A representative and you get to go every year. Is it out to La Quinta? For the elections, they vote their board members and you've been doing that for years.
I've been out of the loop and Dave's been picking it up very well, so I think he's
Yeah, this.
We won't miss a beat on that.
This was not an election. It was classroom and yeah, it was, I, it's the first J P I A I've ever been to. And it was very impressive.
They do a wonderful.
Impressive. I also went to, I had a S B CAG North County meeting, subregional meeting yesterday. And the Robinson Bridge repair replacement going into Lompoc. The bridge has been settling over the years and there's cracks in the infrastructure and it was on Caltrans thirty year plan. We're now at twenty years. So we are work where where they actually are starting to get ready to do the study on the bridge. It's moved up through their priority list and hopefully it'll be repaired before. We've already had some some accidents on the bridge, but before we have anything more serious, we're hoping to get that. And then C H P also, Caltrans also said that they had their memorial. They do it every year for Caltrans employees lost on the job and the biggest cause is speeding through work zones. And Mayor Patino in Santa Maria suggested that they put cameras up for speeding vehicles. And solving mayor or vice mayor said that they tried that in solving and got voted down by their residents because it was an invasion of privacy and Mayor Patino in Santa Maria said, well, they're putting theirs up in the next couple of months. And a little light clicked off and I wonder if it's something we should talk to Caltrans about for our two forty-six. If there's cameras that are reading license plates of Lompoc residents who are speeding through our town, that perhaps that might be a deterrent. Anyway, just.
Madam Mayor, actually, and Greg probably knows this, there was a case, a very famous case where someone was filmed, had a red light traffic camera and took it to court. He was an attorney. And they ruled that, no, you are in a public place and if you can see into the vehicle, then you are in a public place and therefore you do not have the right privacy.
Anyway, just I just little light clicked in my head and I thought, hmm, speeding in areas that you shouldn't be speeding. Going through the middle of our town. Okay, moving on to business items. We have our presentation by Central Coast Community Energy. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As you all are aware, in January of this year, Buellton residents and businesses had their electric electricity generation switched from P G N E to being provided by now three C E. P G N E is still responsible for distribution of the power to the customers, but for the most part, unless customers have opted out. Three C E, which is our our local oh, community choice aggregator for electric power has been handling that. They have been in the process over several months of onboarding everyone, taking care of answering questions, doing a lot of community outreach and a lot of customer service work. At this point this evening, though, they're here to do the first of what I'm sure will be many annual reports. And this is simply a presentation by three C E to the City Council to let the City Council and the public here know what three C E is up to. And what we can look forward to in the coming year. This evening, we have Jenna Espinosa, who's with three C E. And she will be providing a presentation. We should have it on the screen here, but if for some reason it's not working, you do have the PowerPoint presentation slides in your packet. So with this, I will turn this over to Jenna and let her give her presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Can you see the proper screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you all so much for having me tonight and allowing me to present this update to you. Thank you for the introduction, Scott, and I'm happy to answer any questions, either as we go along or at the end, whatever the culture of your council is, I'll follow you. So by way of overview, community choice aggregation began in two thousand and two with the passing of legislation that gives the power of communities to aggregate and they're purchasing power and procure energy on behalf of their community. And so we are one of twenty-four agencies that do community choice aggregation across the state of California. We, as as an agency, or as this collection of agencies, all twenty-four together, serve eleven million customers, which is about fifty percent of Californians. And the goal is for community choice aggregation to meet the vision of the community. So to meet more aggressive climate action goals, provide residents and businesses with a choice and to ensure local transparency, accountability, drive economic development and give the the power of rate setting and policy setting to the community. The way that we work is that we purchase energy and work with Pacific Gas and Electric to deliver it to your homes and your businesses. So we continue to use the grid that is already established and the customer experience continues to be the same. P G N E continues to read the meter and actually do the billing. So we are one of thirteen community choice agencies that collaborate with P G N E. But I believe we're the only C C A in the state that also collaborates with a second investor owned utility. So we do serve the entire county of Santa Barbara. With a few exceptions, I'll show you on the next map, but that that means that we serve customers both across P G N E and in the southern parts of Santa Barbara County in the S C E area. Wow, I just skipped a lot of slides. There we go. Okay. So here are the thirty-three cities and county agencies that comprise our agency. We are organized through a joint powers agreement. So all these agencies sit on our board. And we serve over four hundred thousand customers across this five county service area. Geographically, we are the largest community choice aggregator in the state of California. And we have a thirty-fourth agency joining us. I'm happy to report just a few months ago, the city of Atascadero elected to join our agency. So we'll be formalizing that in the coming month and then they'll begin the the enrollment period. So we are governed by two boards, a policy board and an operations board. And these boards are made up of city managers, county executive officers, mayors, city council members. And the seats are determined based on population. So because you are a smaller city, you do share a seat that rotates between Guadalupe, solving and Buellton. We also are served by Community Advisory Council. Those members are volunteers, community members at large who have a special interest and passion for helping us to understand the needs of the community. Some of our accomplishments as an agency, we just received recertification of our A S N P rating. And this fiscal year, we will be reinvesting fourteen point one million dollars of our revenue back into the community through energy programs. This year, we have secured four hundred and fifty-three megawatts of renewables and two hundred megawatts of battery storage. And I'll go into greater detail on all of those. I do want to mention that we have two offices. One is in Monterey and also in San Luis Obispo. And we have a couple of positions open in San Luis Obispo. So if anyone's listening in who's interested to learn more about our organization, those job openings will be posted in the next week or so. Our goal as an agency is to provide sixty percent of your community's energy from clean and renewable sources, wind and solar by twenty twenty-five and a hundred percent clean renewable energy by twenty thirty. So to do that, here are all of the contracts that we have secured that will provide the sixty percent cleaner renewable energy by twenty twenty-five. And you can see some of those are for energy and some of them are for storage. So the energy for the gen capacity column on the on the right hand table, the gen capacity column, those projects are seventy-five percent of them are in the state of California, twenty-five percent in Nevada and Arizona. And then the storage capacity projects are all in Santa Barbara counties and Monterey counties. And these are all new projects. So whenever we enter into a long-term purchasing agreement, we are securing clean and renewable energy that is not currently available on on the energy market. We're securing new projects so that we are expanding the amount of energy that is available on the market. And so out of our commitment to renewable procurement, we have contracted approximately one billion dollars in long-term solar plus storage contracts. We have shortlisted seven local projects through our local renewables R F P. And we've joined other C C As to form other J P As in order to secure larger contracts and be able to be more competitive in those. And we have issued an R F Q for a hundred megawatts of front of the meter battery storage cited at the different city and county member agencies who form our J P A with the intention of being able to island those resources, should the grid go down, so that they can remain powering critical use facilities such as police and fire stations. Historically, we've operated under taking the rates that the investor owned utilities charge for the generation of electricity and applying a discount. You can see that discount has varied over the years. But starting in March of this year, on March one, we launched our own way of setting the rates. So we have untethered our rates from that of the investor owned utilities and are setting our own rates at the direction of the board and the policies that they see fit. And so with that, our goal is to provide predictable, simple, fair and competitive rates. I could talk more about that if anyone's interested. And then at this time, you have a over ninety-nine percent enrollment with the with our agency. Customers do have the choice to be with, you know, served by us or the investor owned utility. So that with that, we do serve two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight customers. And I mentioned that we have programs where we reinvest the revenue. We do have one person who has taken advantage of that so far and received a two thousand dollar rebate on the purchase of an electric vehicle. And I hope we can report a larger number for you next year. This is an overview of our programs. So this is a collection of programs that we provide to the community and also to the city agencies. So our our most popular is the Electrify Your Ride program, which I'll go into on the next slide. We also do support the purchase of electric school buses, tractors and forklifts for agricultural customers and the establishment of affordable housing if the projects are all electric. And then a variety of of other programs. The Electrify Your Ride program provides rebates for the purchase of electric vehicles, whether that's a personal vehicle or a fleet vehicle for a commercial customer. We also support the installation of electric vehicle chargers, including electrical and panel work. And then also the fan favorite is electric bicycles. This is just a little bit more about the locally cited front of the meter distribution projects. Our goal is to reduce grid stress, increase grid reliability and work with our member agencies to provide islanding, as I had mentioned. In December, we also launched a new program, which is for our city and county member agencies, which is going to be funded by two percent of our revenue. And so that where we're starting with is the purchase of medium and heavy duty electric vehicles, so street sweepers, transit buses, trash trucks, that type of thing. Over the last year, we have engaged with the community. We're focusing specifically on trying to reach the farm worker community and the Latinx community. And then we, in the fall, we also launched our vendor registry where we're encouraging local businesses to sign up so that they can be notified of any R F Ps or R F Qs that we may have so that we can, you know, continue to support the community with our business. That's it. In a nutshell, I look forward to answering any questions.
Thank you very much, Jenna. Appreciate the presentation. Council, questions? No questions?
I have one. I I understand that P G N E is getting out of the energy production business. Are your, are you taking those diesel power plants over?
So we are only taking so as we establish these long-term purchasing contracts, we are only procuring clean and renewable energy. So there is a percentage of our energy that is bought on the day ahead market that we can't always confirm the source of that. But whenever we're putting into place these long-term procurement agreements, it's solar, wind, geothermal, hydro, biomass, those types of resources.
Okay, thank you. Opening it up to public comment. I don't have any speakers. Linda, has anybody submitted a public comment for this agenda item?
No comments.
No comments. Okay. Jenna, I had one. I had a green team meeting today and I think it's getting off the subject. So if it's too far off, then our green team meets in July and it'd be wonderful if you could come and maybe do a small presentation for us there. But one of our green team members was concerned. He wanted our priority to be, the P U C wants to put a fifty dollar or increased charges on solar homes that are using solar energy. And he he wanted to know if you knew anything about it. Is that far off three C E's presentation tonight?
I I do know a little bit about it. And it's it's a pretty complicated topic.
So it would maybe July, you could come to our green team meeting and we could agendacize it then?
I'd be happy to talk about that possibility.
I appreciate it. I I am very proud that our community is a member of three C E. And you and your staff have always been very open and available to our town. So I appreciate it. And thank you for the presentation tonight.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Comment? Green tea meeting? Well, today's May, every two months, every two minutes. So anybody is welcome to join our green team. We have some interesting discussions on a wide variety of subjects. So. Thank you. Thank you, Jenna. I'm moving on now to another item that was discussed at the green team today. Our discussion regarding request to use city owned property at the southeast corner of Second Street and Central Avenue for a community garden. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As you're aware, the city is the owner of a piece of property located at the southeast corner of Second Street and Central Avenue. We have been approached by a local resident who wishes to utilize that city owned property for the creation of a community garden. The the model that's being brought forward to the council for discussion tonight is similar to the one we have in place for Paz Park and for the Botanic Garden in that there is a nonprofit corporation that is asking for this, for the use of the property and for the the city to provide water to the community garden. Beyond that, all other improvements and such are to be undertaken by the nonprofit itself or by community volunteers. Ms. Annie Yakudis is here this evening to to make this presentation. I'll let her carry the water on that, but I'm happy to answer. Sorry. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have moving forward with this. At this point tonight, we are looking for just some further direction as to how the council would like to see this proceed forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Annie, step on up. Actually, you're not the only one that's been interested in a community garden there. Many people in our community have been looking for a location for a garden and you came up with this brilliant idea.
Thank you.
Not that I'm biased.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. So my name is Annie Yakudis and I am a resident of Buellton, but I represent, I'm here on behalf of a group of residents, all of whom love gardening but lack the the land to really do so as as completely as we'd like to. And so I don't know if you remember, but during the time when we were having Zoom council meetings, I was allowed to share some remarks during a public comment period. And at that point, we were about to embark on community outreach and see what we could learn about what kind of support was out there for it. So we've been able to attend a number of events, the the Buellton barbecue Bonanza last July and where recently the the Spring Peddlers Fair, where we gathered names, we earned a little money through the sale of donated plants and marmalade. And and boy, I realized I've launched in, launched, gotten a little bit ahead of myself, but thank you for having me. It's nice to have a, you know, advanced to the agenda item stage on all of this. So in addition to those community events, we've even gone out in front of Albertson's and talked to people. And Tractor Supply and Windmill Nursery are kind of on our to-do list. We're just still in a process. But we've, we've got a lot of positive response, like I was saying, including from some organizations, most notably the Buellton Community Educational Foundation. They are our fiscal sponsors. So it is through them that we can function as a California five oh one C three nonprofit. And Mechanics Bank kindly guided us through the process of setting up an account. And so we have those ducks in a row. Windmill Nursery has donated money for our website and for our email hosting service and flyers, things like that. Yes, Yes Nursery, which is in Los Olivos and is a propagation nursery, has donated plants that we've been able to sell. And then the Rotary Club of Buellton has expressed some interest in supporting a project like this. So has Veggie Rescue and the San Luis Valley Botanic Garden has invited us to include a brochure about what we're doing in the kiosk at the entrance to the Botanic Garden. So that was generous of them. And then the Buellton Green Team has been a tremendous inspiration and a source of ongoing support. And it was through conversations at those meetings that Erin Leggett, who is a professor of landscape architecture at Cal Poly in San Luis Obispo, offered to create a project.
And one of our planning commissioners.
And one of our planning commissioners, yeah. And so his, his students don't generally get to work with a a real life situation. And so in this case, they were able to come and have a site visit at the city owned property. And at at three weeks later, they presented a series of beautiful presentation graphics. They're printed and they're big and I didn't drag them all in here, but I did provide one to Linda, which you may have had a chance. Oh, there it is. Yeah. And you can scroll down and zoom in and and get a sense, but this is, this is an overlay of the actual view from the corner of Second and Central. And this one here is an overview of, I mean, an overlay of the view from Avenue, the flags are sort of, you're you're almost standing in the alley at this point and kind of looking to the west. So and 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 there's so much more. It's just helpful to visualize what this vacant lot could become with with some imagination, some fundraising and of course with your blessing. So let's see. Oh, yeah. Then at BuelltonGarden.org, that's our web address. There's a tab that says artwork. And if you go there, you can see all nine of these. They eighteen students worked in teams of two and produced some really interesting results, all of which are probably more than what we could afford, at least at the beginning, but you know, just a great launching off place. So we're hoping that you will consider allowing us to to use that property and to provide us with water. And our volunteers include local garden designers, landscape architects, designer builders, farmers and tradespeople from all over. So we have a lot of person power. And it's just a matter of getting water to the site and maybe having a meter installed at the site and and your permission. And I realize that this is kind of a process. So we just hope that you will consider moving forward with that process. And I'm really here to answer any questions that you may have. And thank you very, very much for having me.
Terrific. Questions?
I just have a question on the operation. Is it completely volunteer led or are there going to be any paid people that are like, I guess, how are we going to keep it completely weed free and looking good all the time and like tended to, I guess, is the best.
Right.
What is the idea behind that?
Well, I think my understanding is that if you are paying any kind of staff and you're a nonprofit, that takes you into a more complex situation where you have to be very careful about that. So far, we're thinking that it will be volunteer exclusively. We have a steering committee and and our board is coming together. And that's how most community gardens operate. We felt that that we'd have see-through fencing so that you can see. that we'd have see-through fencing so that you can see in, but that there would be a border, a landscape border between the fence and the sidewalk or toward the, toward Central Avenue on the stretch that doesn't have a sidewalk that would be inviting and attractive, showing goodwill and that could be, that would be more low maintenance. We could put, we could install drip irrigation in those kinds of areas and, and you know, we love this stuff. We like to do it. So, yeah.
Question from you? I, I do. We have, there are city properties. We don't own a bunch of property, but you know, the Willumson. What, what makes you so keen on this site?
Well, one of the, the main things is that the proximity to apartment buildings, condos, townhomes. Lots of different kinds of high-density housing is there and there's very little garden space for anybody. It's also walking distance to pretty, almost all of the high-density housing in the city. I think, I mean, it's a little bit of a stretch to the, to ranch club estates if you are back by the river, but you know, it's, it's walkable and since that part of town is also slated to be a walkable mixed-use area with more high-density housing on the way. It seems like a fairly good fit. Plus, it's also close enough to this. You know, Alvin of the Flags has a lot of travelers passing through. It would be very beautiful and attractive and could serve as kind of a beacon, an opportunity to direct folks to the more hidden gems like the Botanic Garden and stuff like that.
Okay. Is, is this like at nighttime? Is this going to be locked up?
Yeah. Yeah. A sunrise to sunset, we're thinking. And yeah, it'll be locked. And for a while there, we had a volunteer ready to be the neighborhood monitor for all of that, but they unfortunately have bought a house in Mission Hills, so we haven't got them anymore. But hopefully others will step up. We're hoping a neighborhood watch kind of feeling will develop.
And Erin, when he got his students from Cal Poly involved in this, he gave them certain criteria. There had to be a tool shed. There had to be certain, certain, you know, the beds had to be raised so that elderly people or handicapped wheelchairs, that they would be able to be able to garden. Exactly. So I think a lot of thought went into it, but.
Yeah, the, our steering committee came up with an extensive list of criteria which we gave to Erin and then each team of students kind of concentrated on one part or another and really, it was very, very helpful to us too and being sponsored by the educational foundation, it was nice to have the opportunity. I mean, it felt so much like we were on the receiving end of this, but truthfully, the students did get some real-life experience that they don't usually get with these kinds of, of design problems.
Kind of like what we had done on Avenue of Flags with the students. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment. We'll, we'll, I usually open it to public comment and I, I do actually have some letters to read into the record. And then we come back to council for discussion and tonight is just direction. We're not making a motion, voting, we're just giving direction. So I'm going to open it up to public comment. For the time being, thank you. I have, I don't know Linda, I have Larry Bishop, Linda Riles, Bob Lodeck and Kathy Reeland. Did I miss anybody?
I don't have Kathy's.
Okay. Okay. I'll read hers first then. Good afternoon. I wanted to reach out about the community garden. I know this is an agenda item tonight. I have not met with my chamber about this, so I don't have a position on behalf of the chamber, but I can share my personal thoughts. I think with good planning and maintenance, a community garden can be beneficial to the community and those who may be underserved or not have the means to have their own garden. A concern for me would be the maintenance and overall upkeep of the garden. So it doesn't become an eyesore on the corner or a home to rodents. Thank you for taking the time to read this and for all you do for our city. Kind regards, Kathy Reeland. There. The next one is from Bob Lodeck at Windmill Nursery. Dear Mayor Holly Sierra, members of city council, please include this into the record. I'd like to encourage you to consider this project. There is a precedent for it. Many forward-thinking towns already provide spaces for community gardens. As owner of Windmill Nursery just outside the city limits, I have spoken with many members of our community and find there to be a need for a community garden. The proposed location in an area with the smallest lots and highest density population would serve members of the community with the highest need. There are other members of the community that will also likely support this project. Gardeners that have a passion for growing and sharing their knowledge and expertise with others. The garden will serve as a gathering spot for those that believe in a healthy lifestyle and a greener world. The cost to the community would be the use of the land and the irrigation water. Water will be treated as the special resource that it is and its use will be low when compared to the benefits and returns. Developing this dry barren lot in the middle of our downtown core would create beauty, vitality and contribute to a sense of community, enhancing our quality of life. Best regards, Bob Lodeck. Dear City Council, I am asking for approval of the request by Annie Yakudis for consideration of a community garden at the city-owned lot located at Central Avenue and Second Street. Her organization has done a wonderful job of proposing a community garden and has worked with Erin Liggett and his Cal Poly Landscape Architecture Class to prepare amazing and creative design options for a future garden. This community garden will be a wonderful complement to our Avenue of Flags medium plans and will be a beautiful, healthy and nutritious service to the Central Avenue neighborhood of which I live. This is a needed opportunity during this time of short supply of many food items and the current delayed distribution due to high prices of the majority of commodities. Thank you, Linda Riles. One more. Dear City Council, please approve the request by Annie Yakudis for consideration of a community garden at the city-owned lot located at Central and Second. Her organization has done a wonderful job of proposing a community garden and has worked with Erin Liggett and his Cal Poly Landscape Architecture Class to prepare amazing and creative design options for a future garden. This community garden will be a wonderful complement to our Avenue of Flag medium plans and will be a healthy, beautiful, nutritious service to the Central Avenue neighborhood. Thank you, Larry Bishop. That's what I got. I don't think we have any other. Okay, then I am closing down public comment, bringing you back to council for comments, direction.
I have some comments.
Okay.
I love the idea. I love that it's close in proximity to the high-density housing, the housing that won't likely have their own options at home. I would love to see cooperation between like the Buellton Union School and getting some kids in there and having some projects like that. And I would love to see like weekend things for kids, like to come plant a, plant, bring some seeds, do something. I think it'd be great. So I'm super excited for, you know, to have it in the community. I do think it needs to be locked up at night because I think that it, it could be a trouble center if it isn't, you know, people not respecting the space, that type of thing in the evenings. But yeah, I love the idea. I think it's great and I love where it's considered to be put.
Good. Dave, any comments?
Well, yes. The, the organizations that we have in, in the valley, Rotary is one, Vikings are one. And, and those units over the years are able to raise large sums of money because the people are retiring or the, some's passed away in the family and they want to give a memorial to uncle and to, for the family to remember. And it's, it's a great segue to get the community that, people are very busy. They have jobs and they don't, you know, we I think everybody that's moved through carrying a career and then being bombarded with, why can't you just join the Chamber of Commerce? Why can't you just join? So it, it, it puts them in a little bit of a bind, but it, it works if you can get their attention and peak of, of need or a desire that they have. Or a lot of times they just say, you know, I forgot, my, I had an uncle that spent so many years in the police department or any other, any other organization that's widely accepted. And I, I just, I'm thinking that this, it, it would, this might be a project that we could get our school, I'm sorry, the group, the, the student group that we have on campus for out, for outreach. And I, I think it's, what was the guy's name? The young man that did the interview for the book that he was, he was writing, right?
Oh, Davis Reinhold. Did the music for us, yeah. Yeah.
And if, if we could, you know, just maybe do a coordinate with him and do a video snapshot thing and, and it could just start hitting the key areas and, and insight. Insight and excites and locals. Kids improve. Right.
Yeah.
And there are people that just, you know, they open the mail and there's eighty thousand dollars grandma left.
Boy, wouldn't that be nice? That's a great idea. Okay, your turn Vice Mayor, then I'll go.
I have actually seen some of these in different communities and they, 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 they are very a great addition to that community and you know, let people come and do some gardening and like what has been mentioned about, you know, people live in apartments. I mean, you can't grow tomato plants in your living room. But I, I also would like to have, as we proceed forward, you know, that who's going to be responsible for the weed patch if it becomes one and, and locking it up. Because you can imagine that people said, oh, look, tomatoes and just going and help themselves to a few. You know, and all the people that did the hard work to grow those and take care of them and water them and whatever the case is, you know, that they're not disrespected in that way that, you know, they come back the next day and all their tomatoes are gone. So yeah, a, as we proceed forward, I'm sure that'll be written out in documents, you know, and show that. You know, there are going to be people that could say, hey, um, a bunch of weeds here needs to be taken care of. So I, I, and I do think this will be a great addition to the, to the town.
I hardly even need to talk at all then. I was just going to say, I know that Carpentry in Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, they all have community gardens and I've traveled to look at them, to check them out. And they are a big asset to their community. In Santa Barbara, they do charge for their little plot which helps offset the costs of maintaining the gardens. I don't know, you know, this is something, we're just at the ground stages of this. So this is something for our community gardens to consider. It just, I, the other thing is they had, at the green team, Erin Liggett showed, there was a three-minute video on YouTube. If you YouTube Buellton Community Gardens, it's three minutes. And the kid used the, excuse me, the students at Cal Poly use Google Earth. And there's sculpture designs in the garden and there's roofing in areas and fountains and area where students, you could do teaching how to plant and an, an open area for, for teaching kids what the, what to do. And I, I showed, I went home and showed my husband because I was just blown away. It was, it was just, it was three minutes and there's just music in the background and it's kind of a, if you had all the money in the world and you could do this incredible acre, what, what, what the designs all showed me was that for our little plot of land, it could be something that looks much larger than it is. And they had fruit trees growing, so people could pick fruit instead of oak trees or native plants that our Botanic Gardens has. This is a community garden. And although they have some of the wildflowers and native plants, medicinal plants, the, the trees were fruit trees. And it just, it's, it's such a wonderful idea and I'm so happy. I'm, I'm getting that the direction is to move forward with this. I mean, it's a slow process. Everything takes, it doesn't take a lot longer than it should take because it's very important to get community involvement. I've learned all this. But it's, where it's a ways off from a ribbon cutting, but boy, I sure hope I'm around to be there when they cut the ribbon to a community garden. So. Anyway, direction is to move forward with this.
All right.
The, the land will be used. At, at this point, we, the council is willing to let the land be used as a community garden. And.
So we will start our due diligence at the staff level. The community garden organization will do theirs in terms of trying to get us some estimates of the amount of water used and, and what kind of uh, uh, other improvements may be necessary to make this work. Staff will put its numbers together. We'll bring the city council back. All the details that come out of that analysis along with a draft, a draft agreement that you can consider and then we can move forward from there.
Wonderful. You've got direction? Thank you.
Maybe somebody could tell me why my cucumber plants keep dying.
They never grow there. They never grow here.
That's on Ottawa.
I finally have tomatoes growing this year.
Yeah, he grows more tomatoes than we can eat.
Oh, my gosh. I, I've had just poor, poor crops. I'll be going to the gardening classes at Community Garden to learn how to grow better cucumbers and tomatoes.
Cucumbers don't like our weather.
No, no, I'm trying two more this year and nothing. Anyway. Thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, let's see. We are moving on to agenda item number nine, resolution number twenty-two dash sixteen. A resolution of the city council of the city of Buellton, California for the purpose of budget amendments from operational changes related to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. Budget through the third quarter ending March thirty-one, twenty-two. Chanel, you're, you're up on this one, but before you get into it, I meant to tell you that your third quarter report that was in our consent calendar was incredibly well-done this time. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on, you, you're up.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council members, before you tonight is resolution twenty-two dash sixteen. And this resolution is to propose budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two through the third quarter, which ends March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. As part of, as part of the budget process, we bring to council quarterly reports and any changes that are required, we bring to city council to adopt via resolution. Some of the proposed budget amendments tonight have been previously authorized by city council and some are new based on the analysis of the budget year-to-date. The total proposed amendments are three hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred five through all the funds. I'll, I'll begin with the general fund portion. The proposed budget amendments amount to two hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Like I mentioned before, some of these have been authorized by city council before. The first budget amendment to the non-departmental budget is a hundred and seventy-four thousand. Four thousand dollars of that is four thousand dollar appropriation increase to contract services. The reason we're requesting this increase is because GASP, which is the Government Association Accounting Board is implementing GASP eighty-seven, which is on leases. And fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is the first implementation year. And to make sure we're complying and doing everything correctly, we did consult with that book to provide these services to the city. The second increase in appropriation proposed is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to transfer out for capital outlay. This, actually, there's two components to it. The first one is to add seventy thousand dollars in for the, for architectural services for the Willumson House and a hundred thousand dollars for design for the Willumson parking lot. And this has been previously authorized by city council. The next department that is requesting increase in appropriation is the Recreation Department. These increase in appropriations amount in thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, the first appropriation increase is proposed is eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty. And this was due to an, uh, an error in the calculation for medical benefit, which included one employee. The medical benefits and salaries were previously done on the spreadsheet. Uh, and what happened is one of the links did not carry over to the summary page, and so this was overlooked. Fortunately, the city now has a labor costing module, so it omits the need for linking and future issues in projecting. Uh, so we did not anticipate this happening uh, in the future. Uh, the next appropriation increase that is proposed is five thousand dollars and this is for the increase needed to repair the recreation buses.
Chanel, was this when the catalytic converters were taken off of them?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, the third appropriation increase proposed uh, for the Recreation Department is due to merchant services. There's been a lot of online sales on the recreation website and all, also in person. Uh, so unfortunately, when people pay by credit card, you know, the city has to pay merchant fees. And um, we have seen a lot more, so we have to increase that to the, by two thousand dollars. Um, and then the final appropriation increase that is being proposed tonight is for the Buellton Recreation Program. Budget line item, fifteen thousand dollars is being requested. Uh, this is because there are more sessions that are being offered, uh, that just means more payments are going out for instructors. And fortunately, these payments are offset by the revenue received from the sessions. And then the last department in the general fund uh, that requires an appropriation increase has been previously authorized by city council. And that is a fifteen, the fifteen thousand dollar increase for the hiring of a temporary planning department staff. And some of this uh, increase in cost will be partially offset with salary and benefit savings that are left uh, through June thirtieth. And the second fund that will require an appropriation increase is the wastewater fund. The proposed amendments total to five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, the first one is to the computer maintenance software category. Uh, this is to reflect the increased cost of software licensing, internet and the purchase of printers and cables. The second uh, budget amendment being requested tonight is for three thousand dollars for regulatory compliance, which reflect the increase in regulatory permit costs. Uh, these two appropriation increase will be um, offset with transfers from the wastewater reserve and the amount of five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. And the next fund that is being requested to um, increase appropriation is the water fund. Uh, this is a total of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars increase. The majority of this is for maintenance and repairs. City, the city is proposing a hundred and thirty-five thousand increase in appropriation for unexpected repairs uh, to, well, eight valve pumper pairs at McMurray booster station, tree removals at McMurray Water Treatment Plant and multiple breaks throughout the city. Um, also due to increase in fuel costs, uh, staff is proposing an increase in appropriations for or not, yeah, so fuel costs in vehicles. And the cost of these two will be offset with transfers from reserve in the, in the amount of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. And the final fund that will need a budget amendments, I have already mentioned before. Uh, this is for the design of the Williston Park, Williston Parking Lot and the house. Uh, this would just require a seven thousand dollar increase for design and adding two projects, projects two twenty and projects two twenty-one. And these projects will be funded by the general fund. Uh, so the, overall, the proposed budget amendments to the general fund increases appropriations an amount of two hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. And there is a sixteen uh, operating surplus that will be used to offset the increase in general fund expenditures. The proposed amendments to the wastewater fund increases appropriations by five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, which will be offset by reserves and nets to zero. The proposed amendments to the water fund increases appropriations by a hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred offset with the reserves and results in a net change of zero. And the proposed capital improvement budget increases appropriations by a hundred and seventy thousand and is being offset with the transfer from general fund and results in a net change of zero. Staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution twenty-two dash sixteen. And I am now open to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions?
All this, all these uh, reductions are going to be offset by all the financial gains that we make this year, right? Right Chanel? Right?
Correct. They will be in the general fund especially.
The general fund, yeah. Okay. It hurts. Okay, if there are no questions, then I'll open it to public comment. I'm closing public comments, uh, bringing it back for discussion. The, the brakes and all the water lines, are we, I mean, are these, I know we're checking the wastewater lines to make sure that those are all doing okay. Do we need to do this with our water lines? Are we doing this with our water lines?
We hope to eventually get to the point where we are proactive with the water lines. We're not prepared to be at that stage of the gains. All of our system is essentially quite old. So we're still responding as opposed to um, being proactive. We, yes, correct. We are being reactive. The, the things that we're trying to be proactive on with the water system is trying to do flushing and things like, like that to make sure that we don't have any stagnant areas in the system and the water is always continuously fresh and chlorinated throughout the system. And, and even that to an extent, we're kind of being conservative in how we do it because one, we don't want to waste water unnecessarily with flushing and with certain amount of flushing that also can dislodge anything else that may be keeping old systems bound together. So, um, yes, at some point we do hope to get to that stage, but right now.
We have been proactive with meter changes.
Yes, that we have.
That's been a good thing. Okay, I just, it's, it hurts when you see the, the hundred and thirty-five for the repairs, hundred and thirty-five thousand for the repairs.
This year has been a confluence of storms with our water system, so.
Certainly, Ed.
Sideline, perhaps we could entertain, you know, the, we've had a couple of people today say, well, maybe we, you know, this, this would be a an expense that we would need to, to create. I, I think we could stimulate some interest from an interested party, interested citizen that would, would say, you know, a garden, that guy can go and get on that four hundred thousand dollar tract stir up the dirt and plant some things and maybe create a little activity for the community to get involved in. If nothing else, a, a volunteer group or neighbors. We started a, I forget who did the, the, and you may remember who did it. It was at Honus, I think it was at Honus School. They, they did a they had a planting program set up where, where they did, that you could go and find out what's, what, what's going to be growing or planted at certain times. And people could adjust their home garden for pennies on the dollar that they used to spend trying to go to the hardware store and other places to um, pick up a couple of plants that, you know, when they walk out of there, it's like eighty-nine dollars they laid out for something. And, and they don't, they don't always fruitfully return.
Yeah.
For you. So I, I would, I would like us to maybe find, maybe one of our departments that has, has an idea how to, how to stimulate the uh, an interest in, if nothing else, the gardening, the gardening.
I'll be happy to talk to uh, to Ms. Kudus about that and then we can put our heads together, maybe with the green team and see what we can go with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. In the, in the meantime, I will move to adopt resolution twenty-one, twenty-two sixteen, resolution City Council, City of Buellton, California, purpose of budget amendments from operational changes related to fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget through the third quarter ending March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
On the fourth, okay, Linda.
Hi.
Vice Mayor King.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
And Councilmember Andreessen.
Hi.
Thank you Chanel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, last but not least, establishment of city council priorities for the year twenty-two, twenty-three. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. For the past couple of months, I've been sending reminders, uh, asking the city council for any thoughts you might have on priorities moving into the coming fiscal year. You'll see attached to the staff report here, a list of priorities that have been established during prior fiscal years and their status. And I'm happy to talk about any of those that you'd like to talk about this evening. Um, what I am particularly interested in though is, is discussing any priorities that the council members may have regarding uh, the upcoming fiscal year. At this point, I have received two suggestions that I'll uh, discuss right now from Councilmember Sanchez. And um, and then the, the rest of the city council can weigh in on those and then if you've got anything else you'd like to add um, or discuss this evening, we can do that. Um, it is not absolutely essential. We have this. What the purpose of these priorities are is to give staff some indication of particular issues or topics that the city council has interest in ensuring get more immediate action that might otherwise come up as part of our, our, our annual cycle. So the two items uh, that Councilmember Sanchez uh, has suggested, one of which involves a relatively recent occurrence. We received a a, a notification from a nearby property owner that the trees on the west side of River Drive at the city limit line had, uh, that's on the south side of Highway two forty-six had, had died. Uh, Public Works staff went out to take a look at that, determined those trees had died and they have since been removed. The removal of these trees though has um, resulted in a, a series of concerns raised to staff by residents in the general area who have indicated that those trees have provided something of a windbreak over the years and have helped to block the flow of dust uh, from the adjacent fields into their properties. So staff is currently in, in the process of investigating the reason why those trees were planted, what that, what, what was the uh, the genesis of having those trees placed where they were at when the, when the uh, the, the tract was developed? Once we determine that, we'll, we'll be able to, to further decide whether or not it's appropriate to, to replace those trees just as a matter of course. If it, if the determination is made that it's not necessarily mandated that those trees be replaced, then we'll return to the city council as part of Councilmember Sanchez's priority here and uh, advise the city council as to the status of this and then the council can give staff direction as to whether or not those trees should be replanted, or some other action should be taken.
Are the trees on the city property?
They are on city property. They're in the public right of way.
Okay.
Um, my understanding is that they were planted many, many years ago. They were uh, irrigated until well-established and then the irrigation has at some point along the way ceased. Uh, and um, they're, they're old Italian cypress trees and apparently age just got the better of them at this point.
They were also diseased.
They were diseased?
Yeah, so it just started spreading.
Why we wouldn't just replace them because we removed them? I mean, maybe not in kind, but like, is there a, a reason behind not just immediately replacing them?
We certainly could, if that's the direction of the city council. We, obviously, we'd want to get uh, re-agendize this for a, an upcoming meeting to discuss that if that's, if that's the council's desire. However, when trees are uh, removed like this, we, we need to frequently evaluate whether or not the trees are actually needed there and, and part of that in this particular case is finding out why they were planted to begin with. Was it just something that some neighbors or the folks across the street decided, boy, it'd be nice to have a windrow here and they planted? Was it something that was uh, required as a condition of approval for the tract that went in? If that's the case, then certainly in order to maintain the uh, uh, the intent of the approval of the tract, we should go and replace those trees. If they were trees that were planted by neighbors across the street, let's say, as a windrow, then maybe it's not um, in the, in the public interest to uh, to replant those trees to serve just a few property owners who planted the trees originally. So it's, it's just a matter of trying to figure out where, how we got to where we're at. And certainly if it's something that is, um, that, that the city required for a particular purpose, then we would want to go back and replace that. But we'll come back to the city council. Assuming this is a priority the council wants to, to place at this time, we'll come back in the future with some discussion as to whether or not we should replant those, what the cost would be and what our options are.
Perhaps even hedges.
Sure. We will come back with, yeah.
Probably less maintenance.
Okay. The second priority that's been suggested by Councilmember Sanchez has to do with crime prevention. And one of the ideas that Councilmember Sanchez has brought up is uh, the idea, uh, sometime back, staff looked into uh, locating, um, what do they call them? Automatic license plate readers, cameras that are situated on the incoming and outgoing lanes of traffic coming in and out of the city. Uh, staff looked into that. It was a very expensive proposition. Not necessarily out of the realm of possibility and if the council's interested in taking another look at that, I can certainly update the numbers and bring them back to you. But uh, Councilmember Sanchez's suggestion at this point is that rather than going that route, perhaps it might be more cost-effective to have uh, the city contact individual residents that live at proper intersections within our residential areas and offer to purchase uh, for them a, a, an automatic camera like a Ring doorbell or ring type of camera that can be mounted on their house. And then if we have a particular incident occur in the neighborhood, let's say we have someone coming through cutting out catalytic converters or something of the sort, uh, law enforcement could then go contact those property owners, access that camera uh, footage and maybe pick up some information that might be helpful in, in uh, catching the perpetrators. It uh, is certainly a more cost-effective approach than trying to buy a, a, a full-on integrated camera system that we would establish on public property. Uh, but it, you know, obviously has some downsides in terms of, of uh, the reliability of those systems. What do we do when the, when the property owners uh, should sell the homes? These are just things that would have to be looked into. So it's, it's something that's been suggested and he wanted that added to the list of priorities.
It certainly could be a discussion. I wouldn't call it a priority at this point. I see all kinds of issues with this.
You have to have a subscription monthly in order for them to save.
And the city would be paying the subscription, yeah.
And then you have people that have the ring up and they want to, it to be used for the city as well. And are you going to reimburse us because ours is already up? And then the catalytic converter is stolen and the ring didn't quite catch everything and the other residents upset that the city, this is our, our deterrent and we didn't catch the one. I'd, I'd be willing to discuss it. But I don't know that it's a.
I'd be more interested to handle it the way that we do with like the lawns, you know, like if you replace your lawn with drought tolerant stuff, we give you some kind of a rebate. I'd be more interested in looking at something like that. Like if you invest in a, a ring or a disc, you know, whatever, whether it's fifty, I don't know how much they are, but you know, some sort of rebate, like if you invest in this system, that way we're not liable for installing or a subscription or anything.
But now John is just talking about houses on corners and.
The, the object was to, 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 to target locations within the city and find a residence that was willing to place it on the property. Again, this is, this hasn't gone any further than just a discussion between he and I. Uh, if the council's interested in. Uh, if the council's interested in, in investigating this further, we can certainly do that.
If council wants to put on the agenda for a discussion.
I definitely don't think it rises to the level of priority.
Okay, no.
But discussion, I mean, we, you know, shoot, our wreck buses had their catalytic converters cut off of them in our wreck parking lot on a Sunday night and out of camera reach. So there's cameras there, but it didn't go to the back end of the parking lot.
And I actually have a Nest camera in front of my house. And I have had my car rifled through, you know, people going through the neighborhoods rifled through. And most of the time, and Neil probably tested this as well, they know they're on camera. They usually wear hoodies, they cover their face, they rifle through your car. So if somebody comes along and steals your catalytic converter out of their truck, God forbid that someone do that to my truck because my camera will go off.
I like, I like, there was one guy who put in one of those motion sensor watering systems on the back of his truck. And he left his tools on it. And he had the camera that showed the guy trying to reach in to take stuff out of the back of his pickup truck and just got soaked.
Yeah, that was.
But.
Not a priority.
But they're, they're not sophisticated enough to use to get license plates. Because when you're pointing towards a street, car drives by, license plate, we all know it's on front, back. So it's very difficult and I think it would almost be like a waste of the city's money to do that because you'd probably not really profit that much from that video.
These wouldn't necessarily be the doorbells. These would be the, the accessory cameras that can be mounted in such a, a way as to, to catch traffic coming up and down the street. But the, I, I do have some question as to the, the, the resolution of those cameras, whether it picks those up.
You'd have to be a very sophisticated camera, which would be very expensive.
We can.
All right, yeah, worth discussion.
So we'll, we'll look into it a little further and, and bring it back for discussion, but not a priority.
Do you have any priorities, Vice Mayor?
I'm the only one and I know we have a lot of irons in the fire, you know, based on the list we have. A lot of things have not been completed, but I would kind of like us to take another look. And it's, it has been a long time since we have had any discussion about this. Would be about the medians on avenue flags. We haven't had any conversation about that quite a while. So I'm thinking maybe a priority this year is to, and I don't necessarily want to turn it into another parking lot because I know there was a lot of backlash that I heard.
That was not, that's, that was the only parking lot we planned on putting on.
Right, but I'm saying that we did have some discussion in the past about, you know, maybe landscaping or maybe like a grassed-in amphitheater kind of a thing or something like that. So maybe we could take a look at that again this year. And yeah, dust those lands off because there was some conversation in the past. So it would be nice to, since we are getting some more development on there, at least take a look at that. Say, I, I mean, even though, even if we just landscape them like the one, the, the.
The one median four.
The median four that we do, maybe even do some more landscaping, so it's not just a yard.
Sure. That is certainly something that is on our, on our planning department's program list right now. I can have that moved forward if the council wants to make that a priority. I will give you the caveat though, that we are rather short-staffed at the moment. And so that may not come back until the, toward the end of the year.
Right, but I mean, I think we should like.
Just in a two-year.
The mayor says, just dust those off, let's take another look at them.
Councilman Andresek, did you have any priorities you'd like to see in the next year or two?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think we're moving in the right direction. That's the, you know, it's the way these, a lot of our things get born in this room. And then we, we have a little show up. So I, I think maybe just being aware of the amount of effort it takes to, to pull this off or to make the cha, the transition and to, I do not wish to volunteer for it. Perhaps a volunteer would show more, a guy with a big coffee cup. And he goes up and down the street a day or two a week. They're the ones that move and shake the community.
Talk to their neighbors.
I, I, I think it's.
Well, and your, your ranch club is starting to have their monthly meetings again. So be a good place to take your coffee cup. You could do that. Ms. Lewis, do you have any priorities that you'd like to see in the next year or two?
Not that I think need to be called out because I feel like they're already being met through things like the city garden, the kids museum at the Willumson property. I feel like they're already being done, so it's redundant to make them a priority because I feel like we're already addressing it.
Good.
But that might be the time to strike with new membership. People, some, someone would just take a, take a, an interest in, in a corner of Bilton's adventure of, of improving the community, th- those sort of things. I'm, I'm going to be asking tomorrow that. Oh, shoot.
It'll come back to you. It'll come back to you. I'd like to continue the, interrupt me, whenever it comes back to you, you, you just interrupt me. Uh, I, I know we had community meetings on the list. I know that with COVID and the last two years, I'd like to get back to that. I'd like to have our sheriff's department come to a community meeting and to pull in different departments and just make, you know, I think our, our music in the park, June eighteenth is going to be wonderful. And we need to get our community more actively involved.
We're doing the barbecue this year, correct?
We, oh, yes, yes, we had the last Saturday in July, the hottest day of the year, yes. We're doing it then. And I know we've already started, J C, I went in to show somebody the barn at the Willumson property. And oh my goodness, it looks so good. I just, I've been really impressed. They've been cleaning it. That old ugly rawhide on the wall is gone and it's clean and the cobwebs, it's just clean. I'd like, one of our priorities is to get that property ready for use. I mean, we have the property, we need to get some income going. I know it's going to take some money to get, to, to make it shine and have people want to hold events there, but.
It is probably, if it weren't for the fact that the city owned it, it's probably just fine for events right now. But because the city owns it, we do need to take care of some issues that will gather us some bad attention if we were to do ADA access being one of those things. We need to make sure that it's accessible and, and Rose and the Public Works Department have been working toward that. Uh, we have a number of projects that we're looking at moving forward with it. We'll be bringing those to the city council here in the next couple of months. I would like to get a, a rental or an authorization from the city council to rent that property as soon as it's rentable. Uh, and we'll bring a, a preliminary fee schedule to you so that we can get that because there's some revenue to be made from.
I know, I know we're going back and forth and you've got architectural plans for the house itself, but that barn is, is, is money, it's generating, it could generate revenue for us. So I would like to make that a priority. And the other one, I'd been thinking about it, but the, our last agenda item kind of drove it home. Nobody's going to want to hear it, but I think we need to do another wastewater water study. The water seems to be doing okay. Wastewater is still not great. We haven't had any increases in a while. We did a study, we had, was it a three-year or six-year? Dave and I were on the.
Three-year phase.
Yeah.
Was it a three-year phase and that's over with? And I'd really like to have the money to get proactive with our water lines. I'd like to, I just, you know, I, I know, I had one person come up and said, I'd like to run for mayor and my issue is going to be wastewater. We're paying way too much for it. And I suggested he make an appointment with Rose and talk to Rose. So if that was going to be his campaign platform, he really needed to get a little more information. Nobody wants to pay more. I know, you know, we all live in Bilton and, and we pay the increases too. But I'd really like to be on the proactive end. I don't want to, you know, I know when we get these bills that it's because we have no choice that it's happened. But this is such a small community that it would be nice if we could have the funds in our reserves, in our enterprise reserves to actually get ahead of the game.
And I, I would like to dovetail on that. And I think that we really need to take a look at those wastewater lines on two forty-six on my end of town. Because I know.
We, yeah.
That has been an issue for a while though. Weren't we looking at maybe even replacing those?
We did. We looked at those last year. It was part of the priorities from a prior year.
Right.
And I, I believe there was some valves replaced, or no, that was water lines.
Water line, water valves.
Can describe that.
Some water, water valves were replaced. And we've done a complete sweep of the cleaning and CCTV for the sewer lines. And those lines in particular, though we've had like tree roots and things like that, as we have throughout the city, those have been treated and, but those are still in better condition. They're not in a condition that's ready to fail, especially now that the trees have been removed, so.
That's, that was one of my concerns about the trees being.
And we're going to do another round, we're going to start up another round of cleaning and CCTV to see new updates on the, on the city. So that will be worked up as well and then we'll update our priority.
Rose, wasn't there an improvement done to allow the bypass in the event that there was a failure on that line?
No, there are plans in place and how to do a bypass, should that occur.
Workable, it's not as if we would lose sewer service on that.
I know in order to do the study that we've got to hire somebody who's certified with the state to come in and compare the rates and look at our rates. And we actually had an opportunity to put out a, a much higher increase and decided not to do it because it'd been quite a fourteen years since last increase. And, and so I just think it needs to be looked at again. Ed, did you come up with your priority? No? Okay.
If there is consensus on that last one from the city council, then I will sit down with our finance director or public works director and we'll start moving down that path.
Hate to do it, but I, you know, you gotta look ahead, you gotta keep.
Hate to see the fund go broke too.
Yeah, and wastewater is not getting much better.
Seems to be the only one we keep leaning on.
Yeah.
Yeah, water's done better. Anyway.
Okay.
Alrighty, got enough direction then?
I believe I do. Thank you very much.
Moving on to our city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, I've just got a couple of items for you this evening. Uh, the first item for general public information, we had scheduled last weekend, or was it two weeks ago? I believe it was two weeks ago, household waste, household hazardous waste roundup. And there was a, a scheduling staff who with Marborg and that has been rescheduled and it will be set for this Saturday, the fourteenth.
I'll let the two people who wrote very nasty letters about it go.
We, we, we all are very sorry that that.
We were there, that was locked there.
Yeah, but it has been rescheduled for the fourteenth, nine to one.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a heads up, our next city council meeting on May, I believe it's the twenty-sixth. We are planning our budget discussion that night. Chanel, am I right on that?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay, good, that hasn't changed.
No.
So what I hear is bring dinner because it's going to be a long night.
It's a good. It's a good one. And since you're the finance person, you can ask ahead of time for a printout of the budget so you can get your highlighter out and your stick of notes and, oh my gosh.
You can join us.
The fun we have.
It's an interesting evening.
I know, poor, poor Scott, our city manager had no clue.
I just let it wash over me and Chanel's back there frantically taking notes, so it's all good.
I know, I was here last time, I was like, five dollars guys. There's got to be a threshold.
Five bucks is five bucks.
Spend it on a community garden.
Yes.
And the last.
And the last.
The last thing I have is just general information for the city council that, as has been previously discussed, the city is out for an RFP right now for visitors bureau services. We anticipate the results of that RFP concluding at the end of this month. And we will return to the city council with a recommendation for a contract for those services sometime in June.
And May twenty-fourth, nine AM is our state of the city breakfast.
May twenty-fifth.
May twenty-fifth.
Wednesday, yes.
May twenty-fifth.
Yes. Nine, nine o'clock at the Maryup.
Thank you. Alrighty, that's it.
That's all I've got.
I hereby adjourn this meeting then at seven thirty-five. Uh, our next meeting is Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two at six PM. Thank you.